Just eight thirty, so we'll call the regular meeting to order for April twenty-second. And we will start with new and councillor business. Item two-one is a memo from councillor Malkinson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mister, uh... Do I call you Mister Chair or your worship?
I think Chair will be fine, yeah.
Okay. Morning, Mister Chair. Lovely morning this morning. I recently attended a meeting that was, um... Attended by a bunch of recreational enthusiasts in the community. Pat O'Reilly and a number of the Parks people and everything like that. The main basis of the meeting was to, um... Try and see how we can increase the... Increase the attendance and the awareness of our recreational amenities that we have in Dawson Creek and surrounding area. And one of the ideas that was, uh... Ended upon was having a sign at the entrance to town, just mentioning all the great and various amenities that we have. And I think it would be, uh... Well, I do get into the merits of it in the motion, but could advertise the, you know, quantity and the diversity of opportunities in the community. Make people aware of the amenities that we have and make them feel more welcome to use them. And I imagine it to be in the likeness of those highway signs that you see that show food, lodging, nothing too expensive. And I was imagining it happening between, you know, the entrances coming from Spirit River, Fort St. John, and Pouscoopy. So, I don't know if there are any difficulties that could come out of that. Maybe staff could speak about it, but...
Is that a motion? Are you making that motion?
Yes, your worship.
Thank you. Seconded by...
Mister Chair.
Councillor Kenny, comments?
Oh, go ahead, Charlie.
I'm sorry, Shealy. I was looking at Charlie here.
I'm having problems conceptualizing this. I looked at the church signs and they're unreadable because you're just so small and there's so many things going on. I wonder why people who are coming to the community want to know what's going on, whether they want to visit the... Go to the visitor's center.
That's true, but I...
Councillor Wilber?
Sorry.
Oh, I actually, I just wanted to mention that I believe the Chamber is, um... It has... Owns the church signs, actually. So, I'm wondering if it wouldn't be better to talk to the Chamber of Commerce and see what they're doing with their signage and if it could be incorporated together.
Councillor Kenny?
I actually think this is a pretty good idea. And, um... Because it's people... Even our, um... Look, there's people that are coming, like even to the, like, to the hockey tournaments and that, that some might not want to sit in the arena. Some might go skiing or whatever. I know, uh... I know I went on many a hockey excursion with raising two boys. And, uh... And a lot of times we brought our other equipment, hoping that in that community that there was a place to go and ski or whatever. And also moving to Dawson Creek, um... Not sure whether there was cross-country skiing or not.
Sure.
And I remember going around looking for... It took me three tries before I...
Yeah. Found the places.
But anyway, uh... But you do go into other communities where you do see signage where it has downhill skiing, cross-country skiing, or whatever. And, um, the people may fly through the community the first time, but they might, you know, register, "Oh, they got..." You know, "They got this or that," you know, in that community that they may, um... They may come back.
Councillor Wilber?
Um, I'm actually going to be voting against this. And the reason being is it's great for the ski hill or the... Or, you know, our main points, but then what about people who lawn-hole or play horseshoes or... What's your form of recreation? If you start putting all this on signage, you're not going to be able to read it. So, you can catch the average traveler thirty seconds driving past a sign. So, I will be voting against this. I just don't see it being feasible.
Any other comments?
Yep.
Councillor?
I was deliberately vague in my ask so that council could agree to the principle of it. I didn't want to go onto the exact types of sports that we were going to have on the sign. Also, I wasn't comparing this, uh... This idea to the likeness of having a, uh... Those church signs that may or may not be unreadable. I'm not very familiar with them as I sit right here, but I was comparing them to the highway signs that show food, lodging, and, uh, other amenities. But, uh... Yeah.
Okay. On the motion then, all in favor? To the opposed?
I vote to fail, right?
Failed. Motion's failed. Moving on, we have, I think, in the gallery, I'm told, a gentleman from Aurora Concrete. And that item comes up under seven fourteen. I'm wondering if we could have council's indulgence to move that seven fourteen up to... To do that now rather than have the gentleman wait until probably close to noon. Do we need a motion for that?
Move, we vary the agenda.
Yes, you do need a motion.
Motion, Wilber and Malkinson, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, then moving to seven fourteen. What's your pleasure?
Pardon? Good.
Councillor Malkinson?
I move that report number thirteen dash zero nine-three from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the development permit application from that-numbered company, B.C. Limited, Aurora Concrete Solutions, for forty-eight Collins Road be received. And further, that the development permit for thirteen dash ten for the construction of the light industrial building at forty-eight Collins Road be authorized in principle and issued upon successful completion of the required ten-day notification period and received through the financial security.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Schuman. Question? All in favor? And it's carried. Thank you. So now we're back to... Yes, two-two, thank you. Councillor Malkinson?
Your, uh... Mister Chair, I move that we invite the Dawson Creek PWE rep team to a future council meeting to recognize their success at the B.C. Provincial Championships.
Seconded by councillor Kenny. Council, any questions? All in favor? Carried. Item three-one, minutes from the meeting of a public hearing and the regular council of April the eighth.
Mister Chair, maybe, uh... Maybe some of the other people had new business.
I'm sorry, did I miss you there?
No, I was just wondering if anyone else had any.
No, I don't think so. I didn't give them a chance. Does anyone else have anything to say under new and council? Councillor Kenny?
I would like to congratulate the Kiwanis for the great trade show that they put on this weekend. There was a lot of different, um... Different types of booth this year. I found there was a good variety. And, uh... And it looked like it was well, um... Well- well- well-attended. And I know that these things are an incredible amount of hard work for the people organizing, for the people attending, uh, the exhibitors. And I think that Dawson Creek, um, did proud there this weekend. So, congratulations to everybody who was part of the organization.
Thank you. Councillor Schuman?
Yeah, so I, um, was at the trade show in the city booth on Friday night and the regional district on Sunday. And, uh, it was really great on Friday night to be able to talk to so many people about the shore water, um, strategy and, uh, the forum coming up. And I just wanted to remind everybody of that forum on the twenty-fourth out at the Encana Event Center. And, uh, I think we got a lot of, a lot of surveys filled out, so that was really positive as far as I could see. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Parslow? You're hearing the report under new and councillor business.
No, I'm not going to reiterate what's being said.
Thank you. Councillor Wilber?
Um, I just actually want to add, and I... We... I did see Kevin and I mentioned it to him, but while I was there, I had several Roll Terrians mention that, um, they really enjoyed Kevin's presentation to them and thought that was very thorough and they were very impressed. So, thanks to Kevin for making us look very well.
I heard that too out on the street from some other folks, that it was a very good presentation. Well, thank you. Councillor Malkinson?
Um, maybe just an update on the library, Mister Chair. As you know, the board's working to determine their ideal ask to present to council as it stands right now. They hope to make a presentation before budget assumptions are done this fall. Before they do that, though, they are hoping to get some feedback from the public about their thoughts on library improvements. So, uh, some surveys might be going out to the community soon to get feedback.
Thank you very much. Item three-one, with your indulgence, minutes of the previous meetings of council for adoption. Councillor Malkinson? Councillor Schuman, all in favor? Carried. Business arising. Mister Schute?
Through you, Mister Chair. Regarding item six-point-four, the delegation from the Curling Club and then the subsequent mayor's business, nine-point-nine-point-one-one. The Curling Club has informed us that they have, uh... That the Legion has discontinued attempting to strike a deal with the Curling Club. They're apparently found in other locations. So, there'll be no further action as far as we're concerned.
Thank you very much. Do we need a motion to kill that or just for the record, just something like that?
Just for the record is fine. Mister Chair?
Thank you very much. Correspondence, five-one, a letter from the RCMP.
Move that we received?
For information?
Yeah.
Thank you. Seconded by Wilber, all in favor? Carried?
I just had one question about that.
Yes.
Uh, to, to Jim, what is the seventy percent? Is that the... That didn't compute to my mind with the size of our community.
Uh, through you, Mister Chair. Municipalities in this province pay, um... At our size of community, which is more than five thousand but less than fifteen thousand, pay seventy percent of the per-member cost. Once you reach fifteen thousand population, you pay ninety.
I thought it was seventy-five, thank you.
Thank you. Did we vote on that, Councillor Parslow?
I'm not sure. I think we did, yes.
Did we? Thank you.
Yes, we did.
Five-two is a letter from Stonewall Development Society regarding fundraiser requests. Councillor Schuman?
Um, I would move that we allow the fundraising efforts of the Stonewall Development down at, at the Ball Diamonds and, um, their beer gardens as they've had in the past and their camping as they've had in the past.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Kenny. Councillor Schuman?
I noticed they're also asking for, um... I think it's donations here.
I think they want a... They want a waiver or something.
Behind or... And I'm wondering how that falls into our new fees and service charges. Oh, the waiving of the...
Fees.
Waiving of the fees for the Ball Diamonds. If I could have staff comment on how they would fit into, into that.
Yeah?
Through you, Mister Chair. Your new policy specifically says you won't grant waivers for fundraising. And the reason behind that is there's no way to tell whether that event actually raises funds or not if you're going to contribute, uh, X amount for facility rental. Uh, and in fact, if it... They... They're implying it would not raise funds without that waiver, which means really it's not a fundraiser, it's just a city grant to the group. And if they want a grant, they should ask for a grant. That's the new policy.
Councillor Schuman?
Yeah, so, um, that was my understanding as I could recall, so, uh, that's why I left that out of my motion.
Anybody else? So, your motion is to grant the camping, the beer garden, but not the waiving of the fee for, uh, the, uh... You said the, uh, the Ball Diamonds, is that the way it is?
That's right.
Uh, seconded by... Who seconded that motion? Buck. Sorry, Sue, thank you. All in favor? And it's carried. Thank you. So, it's not quite nine o'clock. We could then move forward to... Item seven...
Two.
Two. Yes, thank you. Seven-two.
One-one-seven-one.
It's a report regarding, uh...
Five-seven-two.
What's the matter with seven-one?
Sorry.
No, seven-one, Charlie.
I, uh, my... I'm way ahead of it.
Permit for, well, permit for the...
That's just a curve to see if you're paying attention.
Permit for the Kiwanis, uh, trade show, I think it is. So, but someone wanted... Someone should tidy this up, I guess.
Oh, I did, for just...
Uh, councillor Kenny, councillor Schuman, all in favor? Carried. Seven-two is a report from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding sign regulation amendment by law.
Where do we start?
Councillor Malkinson?
Move that, uh... Just to get it on the floor, I move that report number thirteen dash zero eight-eight from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding sign regulation amendment by law be received. And further, that the sign regulation by law be amended to allow third-party signs in C-three, M-three, M-two, and M-three zones as long as they are fixed to a building or fence on the side of property only. And further, that one third-party sign be allowed on the front of the building and one be allowed on the rear of a building in M-two and M-three zones only. Further than the size of the third-party signs being... Further that the size of the signs, uh, party signs be no more than one point-three meters by one point-three meters in size.
Councillor Schuman, seconded. Question? Councillor Wilber?
Um, I'm concerned about this. One point-three meters by one point-three meters is four feet by four feet.
Yes.
That's a fairly large sign. I'm also concerned that we're, um, opening up grounds to plaster the side of our buildings and fences with four-by-four signs for third-party advertising. And I understand... I do truly understand, um, people wanting to have that ability to... For directing them to their business, but I see us potentially, um, littering our community with four-foot by four-foot signs. I just don't think it's going to be appealing and I don't think it's going to be effective. Several, uh, other communities and several buildings in town have... Do have small plaques or smaller signs, you know, ten inches by twelve inches saying the building was built by so-and-so or when it was built. I see that as more appropriate. I see this as potentially littering our community with four-foot by four-foot signs. So, I... I'm concerned. I will be voting against this recommendation.
Councillor Malkinson?
Um, I just had a few questions that I hope to ask of staff if possible, Mister Chair. Why does the, uh, suggested amendment here make no mention of having this, uh... You know, this property was created by... Is that not illicit or something like that? There's no provision for that.
Okay, can you repeat that?
Oh, sorry, I ju... I just wondered why the, uh, you know, recommendation... You know, the reason this concern originated was because a gentleman approached council saying that he wanted, you know, this... The bylaw to be changed to have a... This building or this thing was made by a sign, you know? Similar to the thing that they have up at Rotary Manor that I mentioned in the meeting that we had previously, but, um, I was wondering why the, uh, suggested amendment made no mention of that. I was wondering if maybe there's, uh, some sort of a technical difference or some sort of a, I don't know, you can't discriminate between those sorts of signs? I don't know.
Yeah, currently the bylaw allows for, um... Signage along the sides of the C-three zones. That's all throughout town. M-three zone is the one that, uh, Mister Chandler was requesting for. That did not allow a sign along a fence. So, that's why the amendment was being made, to allow a sign on a building. Right now, Mister Chandler could put a sign on a single post...
That's right.
...in his property. And I'm not sure which council's preferences, uh, that type of look in comparison to on the side of a building. You, um... The amendment does have to consider that it's available for the whole community, not just specifically one person.
That's right. That's right.
Good.
Um, you roached a second question that I hoped to ask. Um, there's a gentleman that approached council last year, um, and he was wondering about the signage that he had on his property right outside the Tim Hortons property. And I believe those were all on single posts. If we went through with this amendment, would that mean that he had to take... That he would have to take those signs down?
No, uh, through your worship, those signs would, uh, be considered non-conforming. They would be allowed to stay until, um... Until they were no longer in a safe condition.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councillor Parslow?
Yeah, I did talk to staff about this, uh, yesterday, actually, and, uh, it seems that this proposal leaves things, to me, more wide open to signage than we had intended. I... I was under the impression that we were just going to look for amendment to the bylaw whereby the owner's name and, uh, the whoever constructed it, not wide open to what we have, uh, over the road there by the new... Well, where the Tim Hortons is, uh... I don't want to see a proliferation of that.
Okay. Any other comments? So, on the motion then?
Well, sorry. I'm sorry.
More comments?
Yeah. As the bylaw stands right now, you know, anybody that has, you know, a fence on the side of their business can, you know... I understand that, uh, there's a couple of businesses out by the airport that are interested in doing the same thing, so... Maybe, uh... Well, I don't know.
But the recommendation says that one third-party sign be allowed, so... It's not like you're going to have, I don't think, a whole proliferation of signs.
No, that's, that's on the building itself.
Yes.
You know, there's another, uh, section there that says, you know, on the side of their property, they can have...
Yeah.
...as many as they'd like.
Councillor Kenny?
Well, I know signs are pretty important to businesses.
Yeah.
If you're not, uh, marketing or advertising, then you're... You're not in business.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, so I would be, um, speaking for the, for the motion to support businesses in the community in...
Okay.
...advertising.
All right, then. Anything else, Councillor Wilber?
Um, signage is important, of course, to businesses, but my concern is that this is third-party advertising.
Yeah.
So, we're allowing advertising on somebody else's property for another business. As it states now, y... You can have your signage on there, you must be conducting the business on your property.
Yeah.
So, I am concerned that... I mean, I'm sure there's, there is some adjustment that can made... Be made to the bylaw to allow for someone who built the building or constructed the building to have their name on that building. But to open up for third-party advertising, we're... I think we're really asking for a flood of signage around the community on, on sides of our buildings.
Okay. Councillor Schuman?
Uh, through Mister Chair to staff. So, currently we're allowing the, the business over at the Tim Hortons, the, along the fences. Is that allowed under our bylaw right now?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, it is. It's allowed in the C-three zone, which is most of the area along the main thoroughfare.
So, how we're changing this is just allowing it in the M-two and M-three then as well.
Right. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, on the motion then, all in favor? Opposed? And the motion's defeated. Item seven-three is a report from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding community profile.
Your worship, maybe, uh...
Did I miss one again, Duncan?
No, no, you didn't miss anything.
Thank you.
We don't have any direction to staff about the, uh... About this, uh, report. Are we not interested in seeing any changes to the bylaw?
Which one you talking about?
The sign bylaw.
Apparently not. No, it was defeated.
Well, maybe, well...
If you want to raise the matter at a future meeting, I guess, uh... We could certainly do it.
Um, well, there's, uh, other considerations that staff are considering bringing forward, um, in this report here. And maybe, uh, considering the conversation that we've had today, we could, uh, move to have them all be considered in a future report.
I don't know what you want to consider, but, uh... Jim, do you want to...
Uh, through you, Mister Chair. That, um... Reference in the report is the fact that we are reaching out for a legal opinion on election signs because of some controversies that have arisen.
Yeah.
Uh, but, um... Mister Chandler's request has been turned down.
Yes.
So, unless I have a direction from staff to accommodate it, or to staff to accommodate it, that won't be going back to you.
Right.
And the reason why you cannot have a sign regulation limited to the owner of the building is you're just not allowed to discriminate between property owners and non-property owners in terms of signs. It's just not allowed.
Yeah. That seems to be a bit of confusion about the different, uh, bylaw for different zoning too here, I think, is part of the issue maybe. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Seven-three is a report from the Deputy Director of Communications or Corporate Administration regarding community profile in the news. Councillor Parslow?
I'd like to move the report number thirteen dash zero eight-two from the Deputy Director of Corporate Administration, read community profile and in-the-news contract be received. Further, the council authorized staff to renew the service contract with New Harvest Media Incorporated for the creation and publishing of a community profile document updated no less than quarterly and the in-the-news document updated no less than monthly for a three-year term commencing June the first, two thousand and thirteen, and ending May the thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen at a cost of one thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars per month.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Schuman. Question? Comments? All in favor of the motion as carried? Seven-four is a report from the Chief Financial Officer regarding the receivables report from March two thousand and thirteen. Councillor Parslow?
I'd like to move the report number thirteen dash zero eight-five and the Chief Financial Officer receivables, receivables report at March the thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen be received for information.
Seconded by councillor Kenny. Any comments? All in favor? And it's carried. Seven-five is a report from the Chief Financial Officer regarding contract extension for waste services. Councillor Malkinson?
Move the report number thirteen dash zero eight-nine from the Chief Financial Officer regarding the contract extension for waste services be received. And further, the council erect staff to renew the contract with Waste Management of Canada Corp. for a period of twelve months beginning on May first, two thousand and thirteen at seven dollars and forty-one cents per home per month, plus the CPI adjustment for residential pickup only while council undergoes a public consultation process with the community regarding curbside recycling.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Kenny. Any comments? All in favor? Carried. It's not quite nine o'clock, so we'll move on to seven-six is a report from the Chief Financial Officer regarding B.C. Transit Annual Operating Agreement. Very important off-topic, very important. Councillor Schuman?
I'd move the report number thirteen dash zero nine-zero from the Chief Financial Officer regarding the Dawson Creek Annual Operating Agreement be received. Further, the council approve entering into the Dawson Creek twenty thirteen-fourteen Annual Operating Agreement with Diversified Transportation Limited and B.C. Transit.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Wilber. Did I see your hand up, councillor?
Yep.
Thank you. Comments? All in favor? Sorry, Duncan.
Sorry. I was wondering if anywhere in these, I didn't see anywhere in these documents, any actual ridership figures, and I was wondering if that information's available. Maybe that's a question to staff. I don't know.
I'll just kick that over to Shelley.
Through you, Mr. Chair. In the document that B.C. Transit sent to us, we don't have updated ridership, but it should be forthcoming before, I think, the end of September.
And that's actual numbers, eh? Okay, right on.
Thank you. Counselor Parzall?
I'm, I was surprised that the municipal cost per passenger is only five dollars and twenty-three cents. I thought it was much higher than that. Has the, is there a different figure that's been bandied around? Is it maybe the total cost per passenger? This is basically the city subsidy, isn't it, to the, to the ridership?
Yeah, Jim, it's heavily subsidized by the B.C. government and by transit, but I don't know the numbers.
Maybe the two combined, yes. I thought a fourteen-dollar figure was, is that the total subsidy or...
Sorry, Shelley?
Through you, Mr. Chair. There's a couple numbers floating around. So the, the agreement itself is, is cost-shared. I think it's fifty-three, forty-seven, something like that. But the, if you look at the total cost of transit, regardless of whether the city subsidizes it or the provincial government subsidizes it, it's nine dollars and fifty cents.
Nine dollars and fifty cents.
And that's up from, I think, eight fifty the year before.
Okay.
Thank you. Did we vote on that, people, or, I can't remember? You have the motion then, all in favor? Carried, thank you. Seven-seven is a report from the Chief Financial Officer Regarding the Consolidated Budget Variance Report. Counselor Kenny?
I'll move the recommendation that report number thirteen oh nine-five from the Chief Financial Officer Regarding March thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen, Consolidated Budget Variance Report Be Received For Information.
Seconded by Counselor Malkinson. Questions, comments? All in favor? Carried. I think we probably have time for one more here. Let's go to seven-eight. A report from the Deputy Chief Financial Officer Regarding Online Homeowner Grant System Agreement with the City of Langford. Counselor Schuman?
I'd move the report number thirteen dash zero eight-six from the Deputy Chief Financial Officer Regarding Homeowner Grant System Agreement. The City of Langford Be Received. Further, the administration be authorized to enter into an agreement with the City of Langford in providing Dawson Creek taxpayers the ability to claim homeowner grants online beginning April thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, for a one-year term with a setup cost of three thousand five hundred dollars and an annual fee of one thousand dollars.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Wilber. Comments? I have to confess, I don't really understand why we would go to the City of Langford. I think it's on Vancouver Island about this. Counselor Kenny?
Well, it's my understanding that they've already developed a system, and it's very costly to develop a system like that. And they've, um, oh, I shouldn't have stepped.
You're doing fine.
Sounds reasonable.
From the report that staff presented, it sounded, it sounded like good sense to me. And, yeah, I, I think it's a great idea to, you know, a great thing that we can claim a homeowner's grant online. And I don't think it really matters where, you know, where it is when a system's been tried and proved.
I was just curious. I, I just struck me as being through. Any other comments? Shelley?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. Staff have been working with our accounting providers for probably about five years to try to get this on the table. And we keep getting no results. So staff basically looked to somebody else that had already been successful with the plan, and it was self-developed, like Counselor Kenny said. So we're going to try this because it's all about customer, customer service for your residents, so.
Thank you. Anything, any other comments? Jim?
Well, Mr. Chair, as you and I discussed earlier, you are the proud purveyors now of E-Hog.
E-Hog. I think that's a good thing.
Yes.
All in favor then? And it's carried. Okay, so we'll move now back to delegations. Six-one Gloria Stang and delegation from the police-based victim services in attendance. I'll just read out the proclamation. Whereas victims of crime and their families deserve support from their community, and whereas victims of crime need to know that they have a voice in their criminal justice system and that there are laws in place to help them. And whereas National Victims of Crime Awareness Week offers an opportunity to raise awareness about victim issues and about the services and laws in place to help victims and their families. And whereas the theme for National Victims of Crime Awareness Week, We All Have A Role, will help to promote greater understanding of victim issues, increase awareness of victim issues, and encourage citizens to discuss the impact of crime. And whereas addressing the victim issue requires the support and dedication of the whole community, now therefore, I do hereby proclaim the week of April the twenty-first to the twenty-seventh as National Victims of Crime Awareness Week in Dawson Creek. So I'll just sign that and ask the delegation to... Forward.
Just as the theme is We All Have A Role, and Dawson Creek plays a big part in, in helping victims of all crime. And it's really nice to see when something does happen in this community, as I have seen. Everybody gets together and really works hard to help.
The Hope Blooms Project is the project that was come up with by our victim services staff, even from the rich. And to honor this week and to help raise awareness, we're giving, put together Hope Blooms kits. And the little saying that goes along with that is, "Like a flower, both opens very deep in darkness, striving to move beyond its environment. From that dark and cold place, it breaks through the soil and into the light. With the right elements in place, soil, water, and sunlight, they can move. There is health, there are options, there is hope." And that's the theme that goes along with the victims of crime and the, the support that they need from us.
Just if anyone wants a Hope Blooms kit, I brought five, so I don't have enough for everyone. But anyone who wants to take one and plant a bulb, that would be appreciated.
This is the eighth annual National Victims of Crime Week. The services that, Victim Services, both with the RCMP and community-based, is invaluable in supporting the RCMP. Their services are paid for, were paid, because there's volunteers that are, that they're paid for by the Ministry of Justice and as well by the City of Dawson Creek. Without their support, in taking care of victims, supporting people when they're going through the court process, supporting witnesses who've gone through traumatic experiences, and other people in the community who've gone through traumatic experiences, not criminal charges or anything like that, but just gone through traumatic experiences that we have to deal with, their support is invaluable. And they put in countless hours within the community, and they really shoot through our papers.
Any questions from council? Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Thanks, Duncan.
Can you grab me one and I'll get it later?
The next delegation, next delegation is Duncan Redfern, Director of Community Service, and B. Rutledge from QB, Regarding the Annual Day of Morning Proclamation. B., do you want to... Where's Duncan? Oh, there you are, okay. Good morning, welcome. I'll read the proclamation first. Whereas the Day of Morning was initiated by the Canadian Labor Congress in nineteen eighty-four, and whereas on April the twenty-eighth each year, the Annual Day of Morning is now recognized worldwide, and this year commemorative events will be held in B.C. on April the twenty-sixth. And whereas the Day of Morning is a day to take time to remember lost coworkers, friends and families who lost their lives, disabled or injured in the workplace, and those affected with, afflicted with industrial disease. And whereas we earnestly seek to set an example and reflect on our commitment to the issue of health and safety in the workplace, now therefore, I do hereby proclaim April the twenty-eighth as the Annual Day of Morning in Dawson Creek with memorial service to be held on April the twenty-sixth.
Well, just to re-say what you said, because the Day of Morning started in nineteen eighty-four. The WCB report for March fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen was a hundred and eighty-one died, four were young workers, more than one hundred died due to occupational disease. Throughout Canada, in each and every year, the twenty-eighth day of April shall be known under the name of the Day of Morning for persons killed or injured in the workplace, mourn for the dead, and fight for the living.
I'd just like to invite everybody to join us on the lawn this Friday at noon for the annual ceremony with barbecue be followed over at the fire hall.
I didn't realize it was like a meeting before, so. Uh, any questions from council? Okay, thanks, B. Our next delegation is Barry Rayner, Director of Community Services, and Melanie Turcot, Sustainability Clerk, Air attendants, Regarding Earth Day Proclamation. Everybody here. Okay, the proclamation reads, "And whereas the first, the first Earth Day was celebrated with the goal of inspiring environmental awareness and encouraging the conservation, protection, and appreciation of our nation's natural resources, and whereas the responsibility of each of us is to safeguard the environment by recognizing that all human life depends upon the earth and upon one another for our mutual existence, well-being, and development. And whereas the steps we take to protect and preserve our natural environment through education, partnerships, and positive actions should be encouraged with the City of Dawson Creek. And whereas the citizens of the City of Dawson Creek are committed not only to the protection and preservation of our environment, but also to the restoration of ecosystems and habitat. And whereas the City of Dawson Creek proudly recognizes all who participate in Earth Day for their dedication in taking to, in, to taking a proactive role in shaping the future of our environment and in protecting the City of Dawson Creek's precious natural resources. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim April the twenty-second, two thousand and thirteen as Earth Day, and urge all our citizens to be mindful of local, provincial, and national laws which protect our environment, and to enjoy in the efforts to preserve the beauty and wonder of the lands, skies, and water of the earth in all its diversity."
Good job, Terry.
Who's going to be your spokesperson? Everybody? Or Barry? Mel?
Okay, I'd just like to have everyone just do a little bit of participation for Earth Day, like use your power or up your recycling. And I'd like our, uh, some of our employees have gone and done the extra step by planting a little herb garden, so they started on Earth Hour. Now let Janet explain that.
I went out to Walmart and purchased, I don't know, ten of these little containers and bought seed packs and brought them back to the office. And on Earth Hour, we took the opportunity for about all of us to, to plant all these. And this is the result from Earth Hour, which was approximately a month ago. And we've just had them in our windows, and we're going to grow them. We're transplanting them today, so that's what we're planning on doing. And working with our lights off.
And we've had some employees that actually walked to work today and did some carpentry. And so the challenge goes out to the rest of the community to do the same. So on the count of three, as we raise a sign, I'd like everyone to yell Earth Day. Ready? One, two, three.
Earth Day!
We should shut off our lights and do our work in the dark. Did you? I didn't. So I feel guilty.
Delegation is Josh Curriata and delegation from the Dawson Creek Secondary Regarding Ice Rentals. Morning.
Morning.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, council and your worship, for allowing us to come visit you this morning. My name is Josh Curriata, and Rob Dennis and I are here on behalf of Dawson Creek Secondary School and the school district in regards to our hockey academy program at Dawson Creek Secondary School. The last couple of years, we've made requests to council in the form of a letter for a reduced ice rate. And in negotiations over the course of this year with Pacific Rim Hockey Academy, who supplies us with the, the program, or we contract for the program, we've, we went to them with a couple of major requests for our students for the upcoming school year, which include reduced cost, us as, or them as a contract service through us. And the reason for us being here today is to request that the hockey academy program falls under the joint use agreement between the city and, and the school district, so we, we don't have to keep coming back every year and writing letters every year, essentially. That, I'd just like to speak to a couple of pieces around the hockey academy and its connection for our students in particular. We had three or four students over the past couple of years who have never played hockey before, who aren't involved in minor hockey in the city, here in town. It's, it's a nice way for their parents to have them participate in a sport without having to drive them in on weekends. Those included some students who live fifty or sixty kilometers out of town, who might not be able to, to get in on weekends, et cetera, to, to access the program. We also have several students who, this is their connection to school. Several students in our self-piece, three or four students, sorry, again, in our self-piece alternate program who are enrolled in the hockey academy, but school for them, some days isn't a great thing, but the hockey academy is what keeps them coming back on, on a daily basis. We have talked to, or we have changed the structure of the program over the past couple of years with RPM. The first year, it ran on a semester program. This year, it ran a linear, and there's a slight cost increase. And like I said, we went back to RPM. I guess it would have been back in November after we just started our Pacific Rim Hockey Academy, after we just started up, saying, "There's a couple of things we need: ultimate flexibility and a reduced cost for our students." So, yeah, that's kind of the summary, I guess, of, of the letter. Yeah, any questions, I guess?
Any questions from council? Uh, any, Counselor Parzall?
Yeah, I'd like to know a little more about the Pacific Rim Hockey Group. Are they, is it a sort of a not-for-profit organization, or is it a for-profit organization?
They're a company, they're a for-profit. They're a company that's based out of the lower mainland that we approached three years ago, or put a proposal out three years ago for people to, or we approached them three years ago, sorry, to make a proposal to run the, the program for us. Craig Millen is the, the gentleman who owns it and runs, at the time, and we started four hockey academy programs that operate within schools in the province, and since then has also added. Jettwin McKenzie, Kid of Matt Terrace, and Prince Rupert have an academy this year as well. And even Hundred Mile House, I think, is joining the year after. So they are a for-profit company. I have to say that they've done an, an amazing job at looking at the cost structure for our students. It's just, to, to get the number of instructors per student ratio that, that they can offer, we can't make that commitment through a post-and-fill process within our own, our own structures for hiring, so.
I'd be interested, I'm sorry, Counselor Kenny?
Yeah, so the, the fees for, like, for the, I guess, for the junior highs, five hundred dollars per student?
Yes.
And then the older is seven hundred dollars?
Yes.
Per student. So is that what they have to pay upfront to be a part of the program?
Over the course of the semester, they would have to pay five hundred in total, so, yeah.
Okay, so it's, so how do they pay, like?
Uh, there's a deposit that they have paid currently that we're holding at the school. And then they can either pay monthly or installments throughout the, the course of the semester, or year even. They've, they've extended some families out into the summer. They also have financial relief programs through, through their company. And us as well at the school, we've made some funds available to, to students who've had nobody access anything, but the, the message is out there for those people who do sign up, that Pacific Rim in particular has financial relief assistance for families who can't afford, so.
Oh, great.
Yeah. The, the big part for us too, like, this year is fifteen hundred dollars for, for students who, to join. We did see a decrease in numbers, and the one thing that we did say to, to Pacific Rim is, here's what we think it needs to be run at. And we kind of threw a number out there, thinking that they wouldn't be able to, to do it at that number, because our intent at the time was to take it on ourselves. But when we started getting into some more of the logistics and, and stuff behind it, they're the experts when it comes to, to being able to offer a program like this and provide that on-ice structure that I think is needed to, to set it apart from a hockey practice, so.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, like, you know, that it does give opportunity for, for kids to play hockey. And, and opposed to actually joining a hockey league? And the cost for joining a hockey league? It's a, it's a pretty good opportunity for kids to be able to play, to play hockey, and, and also another reason for them to go to school.
Absolutely.
The, the social part, so I think it's awesome, yeah.
Jim?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, just the delegation. This is a for-credit program, is it not?
Yes, it is.
This is a, this is phys, phys ed credits.
Yeah, it's a ministry-authorized course. We can either offer it as a PE replacement or as an elective credit. We choose to do it as a PE.
Any other questions from council? Okay, thank you for coming in. As you're aware, we don't make the decision on this at this point in the meeting. We'll discuss it later on under Mayor's business, but I appreciate your coming in. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. So we've done a fair amount of this work in, in similar contexts, similar sized towns. A couple other of note, we've done a lot of work in Burns Lake recently, you might notice some, some changes along Highway sixteen through Burns Lake, we've been working with the Village of Burns Lake for the past four years now, I guess, and preparing for that. So a bit of experience up this way, nothing specific, though, in, in the Peace region, so a lot along Highway sixteen between PG and Prince Rupert, but not up this way. So we're really happy to be in town and working with you guys on this project. Overview of the plan, so like I mentioned, it's a Transportation Master Plan, that can mean many things, but in this case, we're calling it a long-term plan for multimodal transportation network that achieves the OCP visions, GHD reduction targets, and enhances opportunities for active, healthy forms of travel, all while maintaining vehicle mobility. So really, it's in line with a lot of your long-term directions established in previous policy, and now we're really looking at it in a transportation, call it, transportation lens. So how can we improve the way transportation infrastructure is provided and programs are provided to become more in line with your vision for your community? So the plan itself is going to consist of, generally speaking, three topic areas, we're gonna look at the road network, we're gonna look at active transportation networks, and we're gonna look at transportation demand management. So the first one's the road network, we're gonna look at road standards, safety issues, intersections that might need upgrade, whether it's just increased laning, or signalization, or roundabouts, or those types of things will be reviewed, we're gonna look at parking, specifically in the downtown, as well as adjacent to the event center, review truck routes, and as well, we've got a couple specific locations of traffic calming that are going to be considered. Under the active transportation network, we're looking at walking facilities, so sidewalks and trails, and probably what's missing from the slide there is any real issues regarding accessibility, so walking facilities for folks that might need mobility aids, wheelchairs, keans, that sort of thing. Bike facilities and public transit. Third piece there is transportation demand management, and if you're not familiar with this word already, you will become familiar with it through this project. The idea there is it's, if the first two categories are dealing with networks and infrastructure, TDM is more dealing with programs and policies that manage demand rather than provide the facility, they actually manage people's behaviors as they choose to travel. So the project timeline, this is, this is rough, but we're in April right now, so we're just, we kicked off, we had a kickoff meeting with staff members over the phone last week, this is our kickoff with, with council. Over the next month or so, we're gonna be doing our research, we're gonna have a team of data collection folks in the community, counting vehicles, looking at condition of facilities, that sort of thing. And we're gonna input that into our mapping systems and start to assess infrastructure as it is right now. Community events that are gonna go along with that are gonna happen in the first, I think it's first week of June, which coincides, I believe, with Bike to Work Week, if I'm not mistaken, which is, we were just made aware of this last week, and that's a, to me, just a perfect, perfect merge with sort of the focus of this plan and Bike to Work Week happening at the same time. So we're gonna be interviewing stakeholders as we go, there's gonna be a community survey that's gonna be out in about, we're delaying it a little bit, but it's gonna be about three weeks, I think it's gonna be out in the community, and we're gonna try and get that as widespread as possible. It's gonna be an open house, we're gonna have a walking and cycling tour, sort of part and parcel with that open house, and we're gonna have another council session. So the idea there, today I'm introducing, it's gonna be five or 10 minutes. The idea here would be more of a workshop-style setting, and we can get down and start talking about some of the real barriers right now, real opportunities, where to put priorities, that sort of thing, so get down to some, some good details. So that'll be sort of early, mid-June, and from there, we'll go away over the summer, start to develop these networks in kind of draft form, so the road network, the active transportation network, and some of the TDM strategies. Coming back in, I believe it's early September, we're gonna have a second open house, and we're gonna have a second council working session, similar, similar to the first. At that point, we'll go away, develop a draft plan, working with staff, I guess, over the fall, and then we'll be back here to council to present the final plan again. So that's our timeline, so I can't remember the exact finish date, but it's, it's mid-fall, so we're looking at about eight or nine months for, for this process. Just very quickly, we've noticed, we were up here when we were preparing our bid, and just, we really noticed there's a, there really is a commitment to sustainability here, so it's something we've tried to highlight in our, in our project. So a couple of the highlights, we're gonna be preparing an active transportation network, which gives people facilities that they might not have now, I encourage them to get out there and walk and bike and use the bus. We're preparing TDM strategies, like I mentioned, so strategies and initiatives that are focused on changing, altering travel choice, travel behavior. We're gonna be identifying some electric vehicle charging station locations, so that in future, when the opportunity comes along to put them in, that, there'd already be a plan in place there for where they might go. We're gonna be preparing, this was kind of a little bonus piece, we're gonna call it, well, we might call it something better than what I've called it there, but the idea is it's a little primer, a one or two-page primer that would go on your website, that would be a, call it a top five options to travel green, so it would more highlight some of the, some of the options that residents may not be explicitly aware of, so some of the more subtle things that they could be doing to reduce the, the environmental impact of their travel. And the last one there is, we are from, I'm up from Victoria, so working this far away, we, we're offsetting any air travel associated with, with this project and our travel on the project. So with that, I tried to keep it brief, if anyone has any questions, I've got some prompts up there, so any highlight on barriers, opportunities, priorities, or pretty much, pretty much anything. Yeah.
What do you mean by bicycle facilities? I mean, I have in my mind a shed for bicycles, but I'm sure it's something else.
Yeah, it can almost be anything, shed could be part of it, if that's what's lacking. Could be bike lanes, or even more subtle on-road bike treatments, so things like just signage and proper maintenance of roads. So it's, it's kind of anything under that.
Yeah, one of the features I liked in Europe is, you know, they have lots of facilities there where people, there are bicycles for people just to pick up and then drop off in another part of town, but I just can't see that happening here, but that's another thing I was thinking of when you said bicycle facilities.
Yeah.
Oh, it happens, it's just not there.
Those do exist, public bike systems, they do exist this part of the world, just I haven't seen them in small towns yet.
Yeah, yeah, it's the sort of fact that you go to one part of London or Rome, and you just picked up a bicycle, you have no charge, and you just drop it off, and it's kind of a nice feature place.
So we're not tucking showers under City Hall or anything like that?
Showers under City Hall.
Oh, I'm just thinking of Toronto's.
Oh, well, you could be, I mean, it's something that if that's what people are identifying as the reason they're not riding their bike, then that would be one thing to consider. But maybe not.
When is Bike to Work Week? Sorry, I forgot, I missed that there.
I might be incorrect, but I think it's, it's either the last week of May or the first week of June.
Okay.
Someone might be able to correct me here.
I'll have to ride a bike to a council meeting if I can. Any other questions for council? Kevin, anything else you want to add?
Uh, no, I think the only thing is just, we'll work with schedules, we're gonna look at council schedules, as you did notice that Daniel talked about having some time with council, so we'll work with administration, try and find some times at work with council, and really try and get some, some input from the community, so looking forward to starting the process.
So this will, this will address issues of signage, and, you know, we have some disputes around, in some of the new subdivisions, over where yield signs should be, or stop signs, and all that stuff.
I think we'll, that, that'll start to provide a piece of discussion, yes.
Cool. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ta-da. Surprise. Okay, our next delegation's not, won't be in, I think, until ten fifteen, I'm told, so we can go back to reports. I have it at seven-nine, which is a report from the fire chief regarding emergency services contract, and I'll look for guidance from council, Councilor Malkinson.
Move that report number thirteen dash zero-eight-zero from the fire chief regarding the emergency services contract be received, and further that the administration, that administration be authorized to enter a two-year emergency service contract with Tembec Industries, beginning on May first, two thousand and thirteen.
Thank you, seconded by Councilor Schuman. Comments? All in favor? Opposed, if any, it's carried. Seven-eleven is a report from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainability regarding remedial action at fourteen-sixteen Hundred and Second. Councilor Parslow?
I'd like to move that report number thirteen dash zero-three from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, remedial action at one-four-one sits Hundred and Second Avenue be received, further that as a result of our concerns to public safety, council authorize staff to post an occupancy prohibited notice on the property, and further that council impose a remedial action requirement to completely remove the fire damage structure no later than May the thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen. Further, that staff be directed to notify the owner of the subject property as per the requirements of the community charter, and further that the owner be advised that a request for reconsideration by council must be received in writing no later than May the eighth, two thousand and thirteen, and further that should the work not be completed by May the thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen, staff be directed through employees and contractors to enter onto the property and complete the remedial action requirement to completely remove the fire damage structure and recover its costs from the owner by adding such costs to property taxes for the property.
Thank you, seconded by Councilor Malkinson. Comments? Jim?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, the owner of this property is in extremely bad health and has been in and out of Dawson Creek Hospital for some time, has no insurance on the building. The purpose of the bylaw is to give us the opportunity to step in and render the property safe. I am happy to announce, however, there appears to be a sale pending, and the new owners, the folks who will be the new owners have committed to demolishing the building. Just the same, the bylaw needs to be passed so that in case something happens to interfere with that property transfer, that we will still have the ability to do this, but I'm very hopeful that the new owners are actually gonna take this property.
Yeah, it's a good news story. Any other comments? All in favor? Opposed, and it's carried. Report number seven-twelve is a report from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainability, Sustainable Development regarding Green Building Leaders Home Energy, Energy Labeling Update. Councilor Schuman?
I'd like to move the recommendation that report number thirteen dash zero-nine-one from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the Green Building Leaders Home Energy Labeling Update be received for information, further that council reaffirm funding of twenty thousand dollars for Phase Two of the Green Building Leaders Home Energy Labeling Program.
Thank you, Councilor seconded, Councilor Kenny seconded. Comments? Councilor Wilber?
I have a few concerns with this, I did attend the one meeting that had the realtors and the contractors at, that attended, and I have gone back and talked to some of them, and actually some other realtors and contractors regarding this, and it was kind of felt across the board that contractors building new homes are building green, so they, they are building to that standard, and they did recognize that by labeling homes, it's unfair to those older buildings that are being renovated, and the expense to bring them up to a certain level. The realtors felt that this would be something that would be grabbed a hold of and create a problem for securing mortgages. Local issue that's already arising is that people are having a hard time getting funding for mortgages because of old plumbing, so now we start sticking labels on homes, it creates a bigger issue. It was brought forward that it would be a volunteer thing, but I do see it as something that lenders are going to look at, grab a hold of, and use it as a means of having homes upgraded. If, I mean, if you wanna know if a home is, what the costs are of a home, all you have to do is ask for the utility bills, it'll tell you, so I'll be voting against this, I, I do not think that it's, I was put here to put a label on somebody's home as to whether, you know, it's greener, or has it, is more energy efficient, I don't think that's why I was put here, so I'm gonna be voting against it.
Thank you, Councilor Schuman?
Yeah, I think that moving into Phase Two, we'll be actually working through some of those issues that you just mentioned, if we don't move into Phase Two, we don't work through those issues, and the whole thing goes down the tube. I'm going to be voting in favor of this, I already have an energy label on my home, and will be using that to my favor when it's time to sell it, so I, I'm in, in favor of this, and I think it's gonna be a good deal once we work out all the bugs in Phase Two.
Anyone else have anything to say? Councilor Malkinson, do you?
Well, I'd certainly appreciate to hear what Jim has to say before I speak.
Through you, Mr. Chair, the exact concerns raised by Councilor Wilber have adjusted what the Phase Two recommendation is, the, or sorry, the next phase recommendation. There, a number of concerns came forward in the public consultations, one was practical, how many certified inspectors could there be, and what would they have to do to correctly label an existing home? And the answer to that was there weren't enough of such inspectors and se- Uh, councillor Schuman?
I'd like to move the recommendation that report number thirteen dash zero nine one from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the Green Building Leaders Home Energy Labeling Update be received for information. Further, that council reaffirm funding of twenty thousand dollars for phase two of the Green Building Leaders Home Energy Labeling Program.
Thank you, councillor seconded, uh, councillor Kenny seconded, comments? Councillor Wilber?
I have a few concerns with this, I did attend, uh, the one meeting that had the realtors and the contractors at, that attended, and I have gone back and talked to, uh, some of them and actually some other realtors and contractors regarding this. And it was kind of felt across the board that contractors building new homes are building green, so they, they are building to that standard, and they did recognize that, um, by labeling homes, it's unfair to those older buildings that are being renovated and the expense to bring them up to a certain level. Um, the realtors felt that this would be something that would be grabbed a hold of and create a problem for securing mortgages. A local issue that's already arising is that people are having a hard time getting funding for mortgages because of old plumbing. So now we start sticking labels on homes, um, it creates a bigger issue. It was brought forward that it would be a volunteer thing, but I do see it as something that lenders are going to look at, grab a hold of, and use it as, um, a means of having homes upgraded. If, I mean, if you wanna know if a home is, what the costs are of a home, all you have to do is ask for the utility bills, it'll tell you. So, um, I'll be voting against this, I, I do not think that it's, I was put here to put a label on somebody's home as to whether, um, you know, it's greener or has it, is more energy efficient, I don't think that's why I was put here, so I'm gonna be voting against it.
Thank you, councillor Schuman?
Yeah, I think that moving into phase two, we'll be actually, um, working through some of those issues that you just mentioned. If we don't move into phase two, we don't work through those issues and the whole thing goes down the tube. Um, I'm going to be voting in favor of this. I already have an energy label on my home and, uh, will be using that to my favor when it's time to sell it. So, uh, I, I'm in, in favor of this and I think it's gonna be a good deal once we work out all the bugs in phase two.
Anyone else have anything to say? Councillor Malkinson, do you?
Well, I'd certainly appreciate to hear what Jim has to say before I speak.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, the exact concerns raised by councillor Wilbur have adjusted what the phase two recommendation is. The, or sorry, the next phase recommendation. Uh, there, a number of concerns came forward in the public consultations. One was practical, how many certified inspectors could there be and what would they have to do to, um, correctly label an existing home? Uh, and the answer to that was there weren't enough of such inspectors, and secondly, some of the things they would have to do to properly verify a label, right up to and including perhaps taking drywall down or, uh, stripping siding, those kind of things. Uh, it was just deemed at this time impractical to do that. The next phase contemplated is only for new construction, and there was a great deal more support, not only amongst, um, real estate agents, but amongst constructors, regarding that aspect, and the reason is, not all new homes are built the same. You had a delegation at your last meeting, uh, whose specific complaint was that new construction in their area was being done at absolute minimum code standards, uh, and that they didn't find that a very attractive addition to their neighborhood. Many of the builders in town who attended our sessions had the same point, that they build quality housing, that they do build in, um, many energy efficiency features. The things they build in to separate themselves from the market that are visible, staggered roof lines, uh, superior siding products, that kind of thing are visible, but what they do on the energy side is not visible, and, um, so they were supportive of the idea of a label. It also means that, um, most of the work for the inspecting agency, whoever that is, is done through plan and materials review, uh, rather than any having to rip existing homes apart. Anyway, so for all those reasons, um, the projected next phase doesn't involve any existing construction, it only involves new construction.
Thank you. Councillor Malkinson?
So is this the, uh, last step of this program, is this a two-step program? It'll be, uh, completed with the, uh, with this step?
Uh, well, again, Mr. Chair, it's not even certain that there's going to be a program. There's a group of advocates, which are the Green Building Leaders, Campbell River, St. John, ourselves, other partners, Real Estate Foundation, uh, that are, uh, working in this direction. Uh, it's clear, you see from the report, the next step is probably engaging the provincial government and, uh, determining their state of willingness to enact the regulations that would allow this to happen. Uh, our previous project, which was solar readiness, the provincial government had to change regulations and in fact made it an opt-in for municipalities to opt, uh, to either accept the new regulations or not. Uh, something similar would have to happen in this regard. Uh, however, uh, there has been no commitment from the provincial government whatever, uh, yet, so the next piece is advocacy around that.
Well, then, this is not something that the city could do on its own, they'd have to have some sort of provincial right, uh, legislation to, to start it?
Uh, that's correct, Mr. Chair, and if this program ever did get off the ground, my understanding is that, uh, government involvement wouldn't be, um, probably wouldn't be desirable and certainly wouldn't be a feature, this would be a private market, um, situation. The inspectors would be private firms, uh, the builders would contract them directly. The, um, uh, the extent of your, your involvement in the future would be, uh, to enable that activity by bylaw, uh, but I don't think this is ever a situation where city inspectors would be involved.
That was my next question, yeah, is this gonna put a lot of more, uh, work on our inspectors, we'd have to hire more folks to go and do the actual inspections during construction?
Yes, uh, that's not the intention, and at the moment, there are not enough people qualified to do this inspection, that even supposing the regulation existed and even supposing municipalities across B.C. had opted into it voluntarily, and even supposing builders, uh, were ready, willing, and able with their plans and materials to get this certification, there aren't enough inspectors at the moment.
Okay, anything else, uh, so on the motion then, all in favor? Opposed? And it's carried, thank you. Uh, report number seven thirteen is a report from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding a development variance permit for Janus M.D. It's your pleasure. Councillor Kenny, thank you, thought it was getting lonely up here.
I'll move the recommendation that number, the, report number thirteen oh nine two from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding development variance permit number thirteen oh one for Janus M.D. at nine oh one one twenty Avenue be received, and further that development variance permit number thirteen oh one be approved, which reduces the minimum exterior side setback for the principal building from three point zero meters to two point four meters.
Councillor Wilber seconding, questions? All in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. Seven, uh, fourteen, we have handled, seven fifteen, report number thirteen oh nine four from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainability regarding, uh, Peace River Regional District zoning amendment bylaw. Do I have this, uh, am I out of order here, is that the one we're dealing with now, seven fifteen? Okay, Jim?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, this is a referral from the Regional District on a rezoning bylaw which would, um, enable, um, uh, non-farm use in an area very close to our town, particularly close to councillor Parslow's residence, where, um, they would be allowed to construct, uh, oil and gas building structures and, uh, expand the drilling program. And, um, they have asked for any comments from the City of Dawson Creek, course staff can't provide such comments, and there's no technical issue here, it's a political issue whether council would wish to express, um, approval, concern, or nothing regarding the reason.
Councillor Schuman?
I move that we receive this for information.
Thank you, seconded by councillor Kenny, question, comments? Uh, all, councillor Parslow?
Yeah, I, I won't support that, uh, recommendation, um. I think flaring is a, is a health issue, and, uh, I know that there are alternatives to flaring. I see in this report that, uh, flare, there will be a flare stack, so, um, I would prefer that the regional board hold a public hearing concerning the proposed rezoning. Um, I don't imagine people wanting to look at a flare continuously in the City of Dawson Creek, as it is. Those particularly, um, on the north side was have a great view of it, and, uh, I, I think also that, uh, uh, the Regional District might be asked to investigate the alternatives to flaring that are used widely in the Calgary and Edmonton areas now.
Councillor Schuman?
Um, through you, the staff, um, as citizens, we do have the opportunity to, um, uh, reply to this, do we not? Through the Regional District, they're putting out a, a notice?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, it's not clear to me that they're going to hold a public hearing, uh, or that it's required for them to do so. Um, I believe they have a similar provision to ourselves, which it may be only, um, very proximate locations within the Regional District that are going to have notice. Any citizen, I suppose, could comment, and I don't know what happens to that record, uh, but you folks are the ones who can comment on behalf of the community that will likely not get specific notice.
Thank you. Councillor Parslow?
Okay, I, I'm just reading from the staff report here, says council may request the regional board hold a public hearing concerning the proposed rezoning, so, um, can you explain your comment and what's, how it jives?
Um, that, uh, Mr. Chair, it's my belief that, um, if council requests the Regional District hold a public hearing, then the circumstances councillor Schuman is talking about would occur where anyone could go and make their points. Uh, I think if no one requests a public hearing, I'm not sure that they have to hold one.
Yeah, sir, but right now they're asking for this council to, to comment, should we wish to do so, is that correct? Councillor Malkinson?
Oh, I was...
Did I, did I usurp your question?
Well, maybe, I was gonna move an amendment that suggests that we, uh, oh, an amendment that asks the, uh, Regional District Board to have a public hearing about this rezoning.
Well, is that a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, seconded by councillor Kenny, uh, councillor Schuman?
Uh, yeah, I would support that amendment.
Okay, well, then that would be our position, that would be our reply to their, to their letter, that, any other comments or questions? So all in favor of the motion? Opposed? And that's carried. A report number seven sixteen from the Director of Regional, Kevin's a busy, been a busy boy, hasn't he? Director of Infrastructure and Sustainability regarding the brownfield renewal funding at the old dump site on one hundred and fifteenth. Councillor Parslow?
Hey, I'd like to move this, that, uh, report number thirteen dash zero nine six from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, read brownfield renewable, renewal funding at two hundred and eight, one hundred and fifteenth Avenue and two hundred and fifty Third Street be received. Further, the council approves the application to B.C. Brownfield Renewal Program for stage one and two site investigations, and a detailed site investigation for the land at two hundred and eight, one hundred and fifteenth Avenue and two hundred and fifty Third Street, and further that funding for the project be allocated from surplus.
Thank you, seconded by councillor Kenny, questions, comments? Councillor Malkinson?
Um, Mr. Chair, I'm just, I would like a little bit more of a background on how this, uh, report originated, is that possible?
Jim?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, as you will recall, when, um, the firm that did our
Risk Management.
Risk, uh, assessment came, uh, in, one of the things they identified was that there was significant risk to the city of the, uh, potentially contaminated, uh, former landfill site. In order to assess the quantum of that risk, it's necessary to do, uh, site investigations, and so as a response to the report, that was contemplated. Uh, all this report is asking you to do is to apply to the brownfield remediation program to see if you can get basically three quarters of the expense paid by the problems.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. Report number seven seventeen, report from the Director of Community Services regarding the purchase of Waterfilts Kiosk Mobile Unit.
I have to leave, I have a cha, I have a conflict here.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Kenny?
I'll move the recommendation that report number thirteen oh nine seven from the Director of Community Services regarding purchase of Waterfilts Kiosk Mobile Unit be received, and further that the purchase of a mobile Waterfilts Kiosk be approved up to a maximum of twenty thousand dollars plus applicable taxes.
Thank you, seconded by councillor Wilbur, comments? Councillor Wilbur?
I was actually really excited when Melanie told me about this, and I just see it as another unique way for us to engage our community and nonprofit organizations and the city having this available for people to get clean drinking water at different events, so, and I'm really excited to see the partners that have come on board out of the community to help provide this, so I just think it's an excellent opportunity for us.
Thank you. Uh, Jim?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I think, uh, there, obviously there'll be signage, et cetera, recognizing this, we should, uh, we should, uh, not four by four. Uh, we should recognize those, the sponsors on bar, board so far, which are Northern Health, uh, the Dawson Creek Society for Community Living, which is why councillor Parslow, who is on that board, had to step aside, Lakeview Credit Union, and, uh, particular shout-out to Foster's Trailer Sales, who are providing at no charge the trailer that the unit will be held on.
Great. Any other comments? All in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Do you want to ask councillor, uh, Parslow chief to come in?
Why does he have to step out when they're giving us money, we're not giving?
Um, well, he's on the board, and so, um, his interest would be with the board to have a yes vote, so he's not unfettered on the vote.
Okay, report seven eighteen is from the Deputy Director of Community Services regarding water treatment plant electrical and instrumentation services. Councillor Malkinson?
Move that, uh, report number thirteen dash zero eight four from the Deputy Director of Community Services regarding the water treatment plant electrical and instrumentation services be received, and further that Ron Mo, or Armoc Electric Limited's electrical service contract for the water treatment plant be extended for an additional year, ending May thirty first, twenty fourteen, at the following rates, journeyman, seventy-four dollars an hour, non-journeyman, sixty-four, fifty, and materials markup, fifteen percent.
Seventy-four dollars, is that what a journeyman gets nowadays, I'm in the wrong business?
Yeah.
Uh, seconded by councillor Schuman, uh, comments? All in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. What time do we start the, uh, committee, eleven o'clock or ten o'clock?
Immediately following.
Immediately following, rest of the stuff, eh, okay. Let's go to bylaws then, eight one and eight two, we have two, uh, we can do them all at once, can't we, Jim?
Uh, you need to do each separately.
All right, eight one, fees and charges amendment bylaw number four one, councillor Schuman? Oh, did you have your hand up?
Consideration for adoption.
Thank you, seconded, Malkinson, all in favor? Opposed, carried, eight two, uh, councillor Wilbur? Uh, seconded by councillor Kenny, comment, questions, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Mayor's business, uh, there was something, Jim, that you wanted to bring up regarding the hockey academy?
Uh, well, your worship, you have, uh,
Oh, yeah.
You have their request, which is to include their, uh, program in your joint use agreement. Uh, the joint use agreement, uh, was established before a concept such as this came forward, and so it doesn't, it's actually not broad enough to, um, specifically capture it, which is why it's in front of you. Uh, so, um, I don't know that we would need a change to that if we had a resolution from council saying that it was included in the joint use. But for safety's sake, we might actually bring you back a revised joint use agreement, if that was your will. The, um, this is kind of a new-to-us situation, which is that they use a private contractor to deliver a school program, uh, but it's not new for us to them. Uh, we have, we have a longstanding practice of hiring, uh, private firms to deliver things like volleyball camps that we hold in the school facilities at no charge, so, uh, we've often done this in their facilities. This is the first time I'm aware that they have asked to do so in our facility.
So then you would look at that and bring us back a recommendation at some future point in time, then?
Um, I believe there, uh, it's necessary for them to know what your outcome is going to be now, uh, so staff would certainly be recommending that you include it in the joint use, but we may have to do some technical changes
Sure.
to the agreement to make that happen.
Councillor Parslow?
Yeah, this is, uh, my radar tells me, you shouldn't rush into this one, because, uh, in our new fee structure, the, any private group, making it for profit group, using city facilities is charged, what is it, a hundred and twenty-five percent or something like that of cost?
That's correct.
Um, so, would we, I guess, my radar's saying to me, are we opening a can of worms here? For sliding under the radar, so to speak, uh, for private groups to get into the use of our facilities. Uh, I'm sure this group here is very honorable, I'm just wondering about, uh, possible future ramifications.
Uh, well, my answer to that, Mr. Chair, would be the joint use agreement is specifically excluded from your fees and charges, uh, so it's a reciprocal agreement between yourself and the school district. Uh, and as I say, it's very common for us to use private deliverers for city programs that qualify under the joint use. So if this is, uh, a request from the school district and it is included in your joint use agreement, you've already specifically waived, uh, any of the, it's, there's no charge, it's free, so, um, you know, it's, it's either one or the other, if it's not in the joint use agreement, uh, then, you would be looking behind what the school district is telling us. I don't know if they would reciprocate, because I don't know what their own internal policies are regarding, um, you know, our use of Uvic's volleyball program to, to run our volleyball schools, I just don't, I have no clue.
Councillor Parslow?
So, just further to that, um, I mean, this may be a silly question, but there's, you don't have a joint use agreement with any other party other than the school district?
Through you, Mr. Chair, the, the only... Through you, Mr. Chair. The only joint use agreement we have at the moment is the school district. The only other body I can see that, um, might be interested would be the college, and there has been talk in the past when the college was talking about running sports programs, uh, like a college hockey team, that they might wish to explore a joint use agreement with you as well. But at the moment, the only one we have is with the school district.
Counselor Schuman?
So I did, uh, through you to staff. Um, I heard him talking about... It seems like they're looking for a more of a long-term joint agreement than just a one-year at a time. Is that... Is that... Was I hearing that correct, or...
Through you, Mr. Chair. I think what they were saying is the hockey program has been considered separate to the joint use agreement, which requires them to come every year. Uh, if it is considered by council to be part of the joint use agreement, uh, there's no need for them to come back. This would be a matter, a scheduling matter between school district staff and city staff.
Counselor Schuman?
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, include the hockey program into the joint use agreement with the school district.
Seconded by Counselor Kenny. Uh, questions, comments? I think it's a good idea. The, uh, as I understand, this program initially started, it was meant to offer this program to students who perhaps couldn't afford the minor hockey fees.
Yep.
Or perhaps lived way out far in the rural area where coming in would be a hardship on their families for hockey practices. So they were able to do it during school, uh, school hours as a recreational activity and get, uh, some credits for FISED for it. So I think it's a good idea. I'll be supporting it. Counselor Wilbur?
I just actually wanted to add it to the credit program, and I'm glad Mr. Schuman asked, is that we... It's very clear that not all children learn the same. So I think this is just another avenue to have successful students in our area. So I support that for sure.
Any other comments? Okay. All in favor, opposed, and it's carried. Thank you. Uh, just an under... Under hockey... Under Mayor's Business, uh, I had a meeting with, uh, Joanna Coontz, who is here today, and Jennifer Lalland. They're the two young ladies that are going to be the local representatives to Peace FM. I almost said Sun FM. Peace FM, and they would be interested in starting a weekly radio program with, uh, the various members of council. About ten minutes, I'm told, where the topic would be what's happening at City Hall this week. And, uh, staff has indicated they would be prepared to put together some bullets so that, uh, we could take turns if you wanted to, to go down. And, uh, I don't... Not sure where their studio is right now, but I... Where's your studio now?
It's in the Trina Gower Photography.
Right, yeah. So I just put that out there for you. You can comment on it or get back to me or get back to Jim, and, uh, we'll deal with it.
More public engagement, the better.
Sorry?
The more public engagement, the better.
That's all...
Sounds like something the mayor should do.
Well, I'm not the mayor, so I, uh, I think that, uh, there's some very competent counselors sitting to my right that, uh, that could take... Could be involved in that. Uh, okay. And, uh, nothing else I remember. Anything on the diary, Jim?
Uh, nothing new on the Gowan Crook Center. You should see some equipment on site now, but you guys are aware of what's happening there.
Yeah.
Okay. Consent, calendar, items to be received. Uh, there's two letters there. Uh, what do we do with this? Need a motion for this, Jim, or just?
Yes, you do, to receive.
Uh, Counselor Schuman, Counselor Wilkinson, any comments or questions? All in favor, opposed, if any, carried. Strategic priorities, did we, uh...
Nothing new on the chart.
Okay, thank you. Uh, question and answer period. Is anybody?
No, there's no one signed up for the question and answer period, but your ten fifteen delegation is here.
Oh, are they? Okay, let's go back to that then.
Ready to go?
Sure. Come on up here, and we'll, uh, read the... Read the delegation and then, uh, read it. Whereas Astromedia, CJDC Radio and TV actively serve the community and continue to work with Dawson Creek Hospital Foundation to help provide the best quality care for the children and citizens of Dawson Creek, British Columbia, and the surrounding area. And whereas, as a result of the community spirit and generosity of everyone that contributes to the annual Have a Heart Radio-Thon, the Dawson Creek and District Hospital Foundation has purchased numerous pieces of equipment since its inception in nineteen ninety-two, and whereas these items are desperately needed to help relieve the stress and trauma currently experienced by children of the Peace region. And whereas the tenth annual Have a Heart Radio-Thon is taking place from six a.m. to six p.m. on April the twenty-fifth, and this year's goal is to purchase an isolate with... Help me out with that, will ya?
That's fair to part of it.
Thermal regulation.
Thank you. Uh, and ventilation. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim the week of April the twenty-second to the twenty-sixth as Have a Heart Radio-Thon Week in Dawson Creek.
Yeah. Thanks for waiting. Appreciate that. Yeah, six till six. Tenth Annual. Um, it'll probably be... It's a really good turnout, obviously. It's a great event. And the fees of equipment that we're raising this year, um, it would be... It's really gonna benefit the maternity ward here in the hospital, so.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Questions, uh, to council? Counselor Schuman, give me... I think... Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks again for waiting.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Thanks very much. I guess, uh, do we take that, or how's that?
Well, I tried.
Thanks again.
Yeah.
Are we out of things to do here, uh, Chief?
No.
We're not?
Media. Media question.
Media question period first.
Yeah, with the media question period. Young lady, young lady, young lady. No? Where's Will?
He's left.
He ran away.
Okay. Committee of the whole. Staff Sergeant, I see is waiting. You're gonna come forward, please, bylaw. Morning.
Morning, everybody. So, yeah, we... We had a fairly reasonable month, actually, all things considered. We had, uh, period of put a stop to our spade of robberies, which is kind of a nice
Yeah.
breather for us. We did have a few higher-profile events that took place, but nothing, uh, nothing unresolved, and, uh, so it was a fairly reasonable, uh, reasonable month. We are in the process of hiring a new municipal employee at Turf, uh, and, uh, that's an ongoing process. We just ended up, um, getting our transfers announced, the transfers out announced, uh, for this detachment. And we are only losing one person right now.
Wow.
So that's quite an unusual step. I think we, uh, must have kind of turned the corner in terms of desirability or whatever, uh, to work at this detachment. So, uh, we're, uh... I'd almost prefer to lose two or three, just because I think otherwise we're gonna find that we're gonna end up losing seven or eight one year, you know, which will really be, really be difficult, because we did that last year, and it was a really tough thing to kind of, uh, train, uh, people back up. But we've, uh, we've got some new people that are... That are on strength, and, uh, we just actually had a new girl just start, the first female recruit we've had in some time. I phoned and specifically asked, uh, if we could please have a female recruit, because we didn't have, uh, we didn't have very many, uh, and we had lost some. So at any rate, she just started, and, uh, she's, uh, um, eagerly was looking for a small community in, in B.C., and, uh, that's... She's got exactly what she was looking for, so that's good. Um, we've, uh, we've had the first, uh, the first couple of weeks now of our municipal traffic position. So some of you may have seen that position out there. He's, uh, out there dealing with school zones and all of the municipal traffic issues. And he's quite enthusiastic, and he's been quite successful, and that's, uh, something that I'm pretty pleased to have, uh, been able to see that come together. We had struggled for a long time to try and bring our staffing levels up to the point where we were able to free up enough people on the watches, but we're actually really, you know, virtually fully staffed right now, so, uh, so that's good. We're even, uh, over one, actually, right now, so our outgoing position, uh, will actually be, uh, will bring us back down to our full strength as opposed to... So that's a nice position to be in, anyway. And, uh, we've got kind of a nice thing. Uh, our, our general duty members have been very motivated in terms of impaired driving enforcement, which has been a really good, uh, a really good thing. And, uh, I, I think that's actually working as well, because, uh, one of the priorities that we had set for ourselves was a reduction in the number of impaired driving fatalities in the community, or just of traffic fatalities in, in general. And, um, and we, uh, were successful in, in reducing those, uh, quite substantially. Part of that is, uh, obviously, they're small numbers, so you can't, uh, put too much into, uh, you know, a statistical interpretation of that. But I think, uh, I think it certainly can be credited to, to the extra efforts that have been made by, um, these guys and gals that are out there, uh, you know, catching people for impaired driving all the time, and like I say, they've been, you know, recommended, uh, for an award by, uh, a provincial, uh, activist group that deals with impaired drivers and, uh, called the Alexis Team. And, um, there's a, obviously, a sad story that precipitated that, but it's resulted in a fairly, um, you know, a fairly large provincial campaign that does impaired driving enforcement, uh, and, you know, and recognizes members that go above and beyond in doing that. We've got eight, eight out of our twenty-four, uh, people have been recommended for, for that award, so that's actually excellent. And, uh, um, it's actually, from what I've been told, getting harder to find an impaired driver. So they're, uh, concerned that they're fishing out the hole, so to speak. It's probably a nice problem to have.
Yeah, really.
So, um, so we may not be on Alexis Team next year. Maybe we'll be lucky, and there'll be less impaired driving going on, which will allow us to do less enforcement in that area. And, uh, yeah, I think that's, uh, that's really kind of the high points, unless anybody has any questions or...
Yeah, I read your report, and, uh, a hundred and eighty-one impaired drivers. Is that... That's not just the city. That's your whole detachment area.
Yeah, but the vast majority of those do happen
In town.
in town, yeah. So most of that, um, most of that takes place, uh, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, nights or early Sunday morning, that kind of thing. There's, uh, there's, uh, quite a bit of, um... There's quite a bit of traffic, obviously, leaving the bars, and some of those people shouldn't be on the road and so on, so... But, you know, that's really, I guess that's one every couple of days or something like that, so we're certainly, uh...
Just an amazing number, huh?
Yeah, we're certainly making use of the, uh, of the breathalyzer, that's for sure, so.
Any questions? Uh, Counselor Schuman?
Um, something I've noticed has caught the interest of people is the, uh, the empty cop cars sitting about, um, perhaps in school zones and things like that. Does that mean Tim's, you know, off down the road somewhere?
Well, I think, uh, yeah. It's actually a provincial, uh, provincial traffic initiative that the South Peace, uh, Traffic Services, uh, people are doing. And, um, of course, the car might not always be empty. I guess that's
No, that's the thing.
But I think, uh...
Keep them guessing.
Yeah. I think what, what the purpose of it was is, I think a lot of times, uh, people are kind of capable of self-moderating their behavior. So if you're driving along in a school zone and, uh, you look down at your speedometer and you realize that you're going forty-five, uh, or fifty, and you see an empty police car or a police car up ahead, that you get that moment
Yeah.
of adrenaline spike, I think, and, uh, even I do to this day. So, so I think that's probably, that alone has sort of, uh, a deterrent effect, a behavior modification effect. Sort of like getting a warning, I suppose, without really getting, you know what I mean? And so I, I think it's a great program. It seems to be... It seems to be successful, and of course, it costs nothing to do it.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, so it... So, uh, really, we're just kind of doing that to, uh, and I, and I should, I'd say we, uh, speaking for them, which I don't really have the right to do, but it's a good program, and I support it. And, uh, and I think it's, uh, you know, it allows them to do enforcement elsewhere and, uh, and to, and to kind of take, uh... It's quite a gentle way of reminding people that, uh, that they really should make sure and go that, and go the speed limit and avoid a tragedy, you know?
Well, that has been sitting out at the Poo School, and I know I'm a Poo's girl, and I know for decades and decades and decades, the huge issue having that school right on the highway and the kids walking and the people speeding through there, so it was a good place for them to prop it for a few, few days.
Yeah, I think that's a good, I think that's a good thing. Our, um, municipal traffic guy actually lives in Poo, so he's kind of incorporated the area there as well, so he'll be dealing with that school.
Park the car and walk home for lunch.
We need to make some cardboard cutouts of police cars. Put them around.
I thought there used to be something like that.
World War II.
They did. There was.
I thought there was one in Poo's years ago. There was some kind of a cutout, sort of plastered on the news.
Any other questions? Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, this may be a question you can't answer, but I just, what is the law around, uh, carrying imitation weapons onto a plane? Is there discretion there, or is... I thought there was no, no discretion in whether, whether, uh, charges were laid?
Well, I think in terms of whether charges are laid, the, the way that that decision is arrived at, it's actually, um... Whether information is sworn, I guess, would be, it would be the decision of Crown Council. So they would have to make a determination as to whether it was in the public interest to proceed and whether there was a likelihood of a prosecution. So most of these offenses, um, they require an element of intent in order to be able to make a conviction likely. So I think that would depend on the assessment of the investigators in dealing with it to determine whether that person had the intent to do something unlawful on the plane, or whether it was an oversight on their part, or whether it was an act of bad judgment, but not necessarily criminal. And so I think there's a whole lot of sanctions that are available, right from simply seizing the item all the way through to, uh, all the way through to charges. Um, and I think it, it depends, uh, for, for example, if it was concealed, uh, and there was an, and there, and there was a clear intention to try and get it on the plane, that would be a completely different case than, um, a guy that forgot to take the Leatherman out of his belt when he went up to the screening area. And that, there, there's a wide spectrum of possible offenses there, and so I think, and we would, we would react to them on a case-by-case basis. I think that's probably the best way to...
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, uh, staff.
Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Have a good day.
Yeah, you too. Thanks very much.
Fifteen twos, a report from the fire chief. Morning, Jordy.
Merry Christmas. Oh, wait a minute.
Hey, the sun is shining today.
So you have the report in front of you, I guess. Our five-year average for the, for calls is, uh, is about a hundred and fourteen, so a little lower than our five-year average, but it's still pretty early in the year to make any determination from that.
Uh, how's the fire truck? New fire truck, is it?
Fire truck is on order as of last week. Uh, it's about a five- to six-month delivery
Wow.
for the chassis, and then once the chassis gets to hub, uh, fire engines, then they start building the body on it. And then that takes another three to four months.
That's in Abbotsford, huh, aren't they?
Pardon?
Were they in Abbotsford?
Abbotsford, yes, yes.
Good. Any questions from chief, for the chief? Counselor Schuman?
I was just curious to know how the, was it last Sunday, the, the fire happened, how everything went with, with staff and, and, uh, fighting the fire, if there was any, anything that came up.
We had a good turnout. We had, uh, twenty firefighters show up. Uh, that was a mixture of, uh, full-time career and our auxiliary firefighters, so we had a good, uh, number of staff show up. The fire itself is still under investigation right at this point, so we're just waiting for some, uh, other opinions, I guess, in, uh, in the fire itself, so... Other than that, that's about it for that particular one anyways.
There was reports they had to rescue one of the residents from the top floor and their dog.
Yes, the, the, uh, residents upstairs only had one way to get out, and that was a hallway that led to a set of stairs in the back. And at that particular, the, the fire was in the hallway, so that particular person couldn't get into the hallway to the stairs. So we had to put a ladder up and, and bring him down out of the window of the bedroom, I guess.
All good.
Good job.
Pardon?
Counselor...
Good job.
Thank you.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Yeah, I, uh, appreciate what Cheryl said. I, I heard some good things about the, uh, about your conduct at the, uh, conduct and management at the fire over there a couple of weeks ago, so congratulations, yeah.
Counselor Wilbur?
Um, just wanted to add that it's never nice to have a fire, but it is really nice when you can save the neighboring buildings. So kudos on our fire department for containing that fire, for sure.
Okay. I'll pass that on. I'll pass that on.
Okay, thanks, Chief. Anything else?
One other thing I just want to mention is, uh, we've been working on our emergency plan for the past few months. And, uh, staff has been involved in it heavily as well, our senior staff. They've done training. Uh, now, all the training, uh, to this point is, is caught up. Uh, there's only one more day. We're actually going to have a tabletop exercise in May sometime. And, uh, so all staff will know what to do in case something goes sideways.
Good. I had a dream last night. There was a major tornado came right through the middle of town. So as long as you're prepared for that, I'll sleep better.
Okay, uh, thanks. Freddie?
My house tipped over. But I saved my cat.
Ms. Ginter?
Good morning.
Morning.
Few things that I'd like to note, um, our department helped out a lot with the trade show. The new, um, booth that we have set up there looks really nice. Um, also job postings for vacancies, uh, summer staff, um, RCMP clerical, bylaw enforcement, and, uh, casual posting for our own corporate administration department looking to fill. Um, Tamari Krancheck is leaving, leaving us soon. Uh, she's been with us for seven years. Uh, she's heading into a hundred mile house. And, uh, we're gonna miss her. Um, Gladys Ingram, she's another long-serving employee, thirty-five years. We had a retirement lunch for her last week. And she's gonna be helping, she's such a dedicated employee, she's still gonna help me out with the property maintenance bylaw, just the final touches on that. Said she wouldn't leave me stranded. Um, we had the grand opening of the Bob Trail Lounge on April twelfth. And the next, uh, recognition is for the Rosella Borak Road, which is coming up as soon as we get rid of the snow. Maybe in July. Um, and the last thing, economic development, uh, not, no longer the task force, the advisory committee. We had a new, uh, chair appointed, Samantha from Tourism. And, uh, Kevin Kurata is the vice chair. And we're working through a SWAT analysis right now. And, uh, results will be presented to council over the next couple of months.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Okay, thank you very much, Brenda. You've been busy. Report fifteen fourteen from Ms. Wolf. Or is it Ms. Lozal's doing it?
That's okay. I'm sitting here, so I'll speak to it. Um, before I begin, I just want to make one correction. Numbers in my head coming out of my mouth. I hate when they're, uh, they're wrong. So to Councillor Parslow, the total cost per passenger of transit is actually nine twenty-one. Not nine fifty, as I had said.
Difference from what you said before.
Absolutely. And that was...
How many cents difference was that?
Yeah, thirty-one cents. Um, that's up from eight fifty the year before. It was in the report, so I just wanted to clear that up, so...
Yeah, thank you.
Um, so in the committee of the whole report, um, we're basically reporting out everything that comes to council on a, a per-meeting basis. But, uh, just a couple of things. Um, we're just finishing up the financial statements, and we're hoping to bring them to council, um, in early May. So, uh, wait for that. And I just want to remind, uh, all the residents tomorrow, Tuesday, April twenty-third, is the final public consultation to do with budget. And council's, uh, final meeting is today at one o'clock. So please come and attend that. And, um, basically, anything to do with strategic priorities is kind of on hold until we get through the budget and, uh, year end. So that's pretty much, uh, the report. So does anybody have any questions?
I guess, I'll take that as a no. Thank you very much, Shelley.
You're welcome.
Mr. Henderson. What a guy.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, one thing I'll bring your attention to is, uh, building permits. Again, uh, you'll notice that, uh, another good month and, and twenty thirteen is, uh, off to a great start. Nine point two million dollars' worth of, uh, uh, value with permits issued to date compared to two point three last year. So, yeah, great start. Things are busy. Things are good that way. Um, really, uh, probably just, uh, take this opportunity to talk a little bit about our water meeting on April twenty-fourth, which is Wednesday, um, and what we've done to date. As, uh, Councillor Wilber brought up, I did meet with Rotary last week. Reg and I did a presentation with them. We had information at the trade show. Uh, so we certainly got, uh, out to a few more people there. And I understand, uh, I think we got about an additional fifty responses online over the weekend. So that's good. I attribute that strictly to, to the trade show. I think we're ab- over three hundred survey responses to date. And hopefully with the meeting on Wednesday, we'll get a few more. We have a phone survey following up after that, um, out to four or five hundred people. So it's coming, it's coming together. Um, is there any questions regarding the Sure Water Campaign specifically?
Nope. It's a topic that we're gonna be discussing later as well, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, there was just one other thing that I, I wanted to, uh, mention, is yesterday at the BCWWA, uh, convention, Dawson Creek received an award for the water reclamation, uh, plant. So I was just gonna get the exact wording here of it. Um, Award for Excellence in Water and Waste Community. So, um, our water reclamation plant was recognized. And John Callenschuck was down at the conference and received the award yesterday. So it's great, great to be recognized.
Uh, Councillor Wilber?
Yes, Kevin triggered something for me. There was a lady that stopped by our booth on Sunday from Poo Scoopy. So, um, she had taken a, quite a stack out to put at the post office in Poo Scoopy. Some people hadn't got them. So if anyone's in Poo Scoopy looking for them, there is a stack in the post office.
Certainly.
Thank you.
We did have some at the village municipal hall out there as well. But just trying to get that, uh, out to as many people as possible.
Thank you for the tour out to the, uh, Arasweer and following the, the line back into Dawson, pointing out all the reservoirs and pump houses and stuff like that. It was informative.
Very good.
You bet.
Any other questions? Anything else, Kevin?
Well, I'm sure there is, but, uh, it's, it's evading me at this moment.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Rayner is here, I notice.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, just, um, first wanted to get that out of me. A couple of things I just wanted to highlight in the report today and then, uh, talk mostly on my str- some of the strategic, uh, work we're doing. Um, as most know, we had the, the challenge of, uh, ice, ice out and carnival finish. And, uh, I just wanted to acknowledge staff to council what a great job they did do. Uh, it's the first time ever that we have, uh, have had such a tight timeline. And, and I think it just shows the, the dedication of staff, but more so their ability. Uh, this was, um, a very tight time for them to get that ready. And, uh, I went in, uh, Monday afternoon and, and everything was ready to go. And I didn't hear anything from the Qantas, so that's an extremely good sign. And, um, I mean, around preparation, uh, Councillor Schuman. Um, and so I just wanted to acknowledge that, uh, at least now we have some data. Uh, there was the extra cost that council was aware going to that. Uh, but certainly we have some timelines and some, some good ideas on how we can do that. Uh, it's a, it's a busy season now as, into transition. I just wanted to, to comment that, uh, it is amazing how we transitioned from a very long winter into a very short summer. And, uh, some of the beautification and cleaning that'll take place in, in partnership or, or working with, uh, Kevin and specifically with the community as we get ready for our cleanup within the community. Um, a couple of, um, things around demonstrated competency. I just wanted to highlight that. It's very critical. And, and for our staff out of the pool, it is, it is one of the biggest challenges we have around staffing just because of the level of certification. And, uh, Melina and the staff do a great job out there. And all the competency testing was completed last, uh, last week. And I know it's a little stressful for our staff, but, uh, the critical insurance, uh, that we're as good and better than we can be in the pool for our staff is, is, uh, something we don't overlook lightly. So to Melina and them, thank you for that. Uh, I wanted to highlight, um, some work done in our Dawson Creek Kids Port Chapter. And, uh, Councillor Schuman is involved and been involved in that since the inaugural days back in twenty-ten. And, uh, you know, working with, with Terra Mares and Erin, Erin Oliver within our department, uh, they've done an outstanding job to move that. Uh, there were a couple of highlights in there that forty-six hundred and fifty-one dollars has been provided to support twenty, uh, eight youth in our community of choice. And, um, you know, continues to show that there are needs in our community that people find ways. And in this case, the, the chapter has done a great job to, to make that work. And they were recently, and I think, uh, if I'm not wrong, it was the charity of choice as well for RBC, for the golf tournament to, to match some dollars. So, uh, we've seen within our community a number of opportunities where, uh, companies and, and partners are prepared to come forward. Uh, and, uh, it's, it's always amazed me since we moved here six years ago of what that is within our community and how that community reaches out. So, uh, I'd like to thank that department side for that. Um, just wanted to flip, I know Kevin's got a busy presentation as well. Uh, busy couple of weeks for us. Uh, union contract negotiations begin the week. Uh, so council will be briefed through, uh, Jim, through that process. And, uh, that begins next Monday, scheduled to begin next Monday afternoon. And to be, uh, hopefully, I think we've put five days aside tire to, to work that. So, uh, we'll see where that goes as well. And looking forward to some good work with the union on that. Uh, Crescent View Park Plan to date. Um, I know Darcy and David were up. Uh, one of our biggest challenges when we, with such a big parcel of green space was the material that was, was in that, um, you know, that space when it was turned over. We did an attempt last year to try and do some seeding, uh, but because of the drought conditions, uh, certainly hampered that. So, uh, David is putting together for our Parks Department a, a bit of a strategical plan around that. Uh, and I think most of the local residents would understand the challenges of the weeds within some of the material. And, and once you turn it, turn it over and, and that process. So we'll be bringing a report back because, uh, we'll have to look at some options of weed control and, and get council's, uh, support with that as well. Um, the cemetery expansion, uh, I'm, Duncan is working with this one with, uh, with Jody. And, uh, it looks like that's moving forward. And, uh, that should be all well on time within the November budget, uh, timelines we have it. And the only other one I wanted to chat very briefly about was the Hockey Canada Special Events. Uh, as council is aware, you provide us with opportunity to explore, uh, those opportunities. One of the most significant challenges we do have, uh, in relationship to bringing that next bar up higher is, is the, uh, is the accommodation with, within the dressing rooms. And that, that is a little bit more limited than we'd expected. Uh, but, uh, in fairness to, it's an in-country event center. It was never built as a hockey arena. Um, so a little more accommodating. And, and we worked our way through, uh, some of the U-18. Uh, but the standard of, of what the national level of sledge because of the, uh, limitations of, uh, mobility and, uh, the, that has challenged us. So, uh, speaking with Hockey Canada, Ryan and I decided and, and it's spoken that we're, we're gonna wait this one out a bit in the sense of, of putting forward that application to date. Uh, but with that, uh, Hockey Canada feels they have three fairly good, um, applications currently online. Uh, I didn't think we did need to, if we kind of know where we're at, I didn't think we needed to spend a bunch of more resources to date. Uh, nor did I feel it was, uh, economically sound to bring forward our requests for some additional capital building at this time. I think we need to find, uh, as we move forward, what those limitations can be. Uh, speaking with Hockey Canada on that, uh, they were very supportive. We, we are a community in very good standing because we have two great examples of finding ways to make it happen. And, um, I, I think that, again, I have talked a little bit about this before, our, our testament as a community and hosting the Northern B.C. Winter Games and, and how we find ways to bring volunteers and people together to make, uh, you know, coming to the north where people think we can't, uh, we just find a way to make it happen. So, uh, our ability to be in good standing with Hockey Canada is critical, uh, because they would like to have us on that short retainer. They believe we could with some adjustments with our current facility. If the three bids, uh, don't work out, that they know that we could. And we, we've told them that we could find ways, but we're not prepared to put capital investment to find that today. Uh, doesn't mean that we're off the radar in regards to further, uh, the process. Uh, I think, uh, Shelley, our planning process for next year is probably only, you know, months away from starting all over again. So, uh, at that time, we'll bring additional, uh, opportunity forward to council. Okay, any questions at the time?
Uh, Barry, last fall, or early in the winter, there was some folks up on Ninetieth come in about trees getting into their sewer and into their foundation. Is that, is that what you're talking about? You say tree removal policy, gathering information. Is that what that's about or?
That policies is, is that separate policy. We're looking at doing some review with, uh, council.
Yeah.
Um, but we are working, uh, spring was the, sort of the deadline work. We need to, uh, get back in there and we're, we, it needs to get completed here before spring or into the spring.
Yeah.
So I'll be meeting specifically again with that property owner.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Councillor Schuman?
Um, hi Barry. I'm not sure if this question is for you or is for Kevin. Um, the transportation consultant plan, the transportation plan consultant reminded me of something. Where are we, uh, with our electric vehicle charging stations? You know, we had applied for, or did we get the grants to put in the, like, I mean, I remember seven stations, uh, possibly for the community. Has anything moved on that? Or, I mean, he said the future, and I was thinking...
Yeah, I think he probably hasn't been updated on the current work that's been done to date. Uh, my understanding, Kevin could probably give us the, the most detail on that. Or Matt actually is the one that's, uh, dealing with that. So I'll bring, I'll bring some information back to you and make sure council gets that as well.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Barry.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, with that, I think we will, uh, have a motion to adjourn to the closed. Councillor Kenny, Councillor Wilkinson, all in favor, opposed, and it's carried. So we'll take five, seven minutes.
Where was the place that the lady used to?
Mallie.
Mallie.
Well, it's, uh, just after one o'clock, so we'll call the budget meeting to order. And we'll start with item two, one minutes of the budget meeting of, uh, April eighth for adoption. So move. Uh, Parslow and Malkinson, all in favor, opposed if any, and that's carried. Item three, items for discussion, report number thirteen zero nine eight from Ms. Wolf. And I'll try to open mine up.
I move the recommendation that, uh, number, report number thirteen oh nine eight from the chief financial officer. Read the two thousand thirteen five-year financial plan update report. We'll see for information.
Uh, seconded by Wilbur, all in favor. Questions? All in favor or a poll of if any, none, that's carried. Okay. Now then, the next bullet is the, I think it's the five-year financial plan, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, it is. We've done that.
We did it.
We just did.
We're done.
Did.
Okay, so we are finished the budget meeting. Well, I don't know if I like that or not because I have some things to say.
Please.
Right?
Let's hear them.
I'm concerned about, uh, the level of debt. I really am. Uh, and the debt servicing costs seem to be going up rather than down here. And I don't know what we do about that except spend less money. But we do have some serious things that need to be done in the sewer and water system. So where does that put us in terms of our borrowing capacity? That would be a question. For you, that's for you. Surprise.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Um, if you recall from the last meeting, uh, in the report there, the, uh, the percentage of the, uh, debt servicing liability doesn't change much. But it is basically based on the fact that, um, our assessment base will continue to rise at the projected growth rate. And, um, fair share will continue to rise at the projected, uh, growth rate. So, um, some of the risks there, it, it was around fifty, fifty-seven percent over the five-year plan. So some of the risk there is if you don't get the growth projections, then the room that you have to borrow is going to be reduced. So it's either based, but there's two factors there. Your debt servicing increasing, your growth rate decreasing, so that your...
Go ahead, Shelley.
Go ahead.
So that your, uh, revenue sources may not be, um, if they're not realized to what's projected. So there's two, two components there. But, um, I think the way the, uh, we prepare the five-year plan...
prepare the, uh, five-year plan, we're looking at both of those, and what the projections are as far as revenue sources as well as spending. So, um, just need to keep an eye on it, as well as the debt management policy, basically, um, calls for me reporting to you when we go reach the fifteen percent, which we will be doing on water and sewer, if the debt borrowing is approved, so just to be cognizant of both those factors, and, um, you know, depending on what happens in the water fund over the next little while, that could certainly change things significantly, so, um, it's pretty much.
Thank you. Any other questions?
My apologies.
Well, I started early just to make you feel bad.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we're just looking at the five-year plan, Shirley, have any questions, 'cause we're just about to adjourn, actually.
Yeah, no, I didn't.
Mister Chair, for me.
Yes, Shelley.
There's only one, one other thing that I, uh, did not report out in the report is, and that's the, um, some of the information that we take to the public consultation. So, um, last August, we did the twenty-eleven Statement of Financial Condition that shows all the indicators and the trends and the targets, and it's very complicated, and some people don't understand it, but, um, one of the approvals through council is that we take it to the public consultation, and, um, what that report and the underlying information provides is that it's trend information over a long period of time, so it has low levels, high levels, and targets, so that, um, anybody interested in looking at that can look at those, um, graphs over a period of time, so it helps, um, when we're considering future costs and future revenue levels. This is the twenty-eleven report, just because there's not enough time to update the twenty-twelve.
Right.
So then next year, the twenty-twelve will be updated, so that's additional information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Jim, any, any to add?
Uh, just to give you a heads up for your public consultation tomorrow night, uh, at K-PAC for budget, um, this is, um, the session at which you report out to the citizens the decisions you have made, so this time you'll all be sitting up at the front, as opposed to mingling with the crowd, and, uh, so that, uh, staff can sit to the side and be out of any potential line of fire there, you know, it's, uh, wouldn't want any innocent parties to be accidentally stoned or anything.
Okay.
But he who is sinless.
All right, uh, thank you, then, uh, motion to adjourn. Schuman, thank you. Uh, Wilbur?
She was here.
All in favor, opposed, and it's carried, and we'll see you tomorrow night at, uh, the budget meeting.
Mm-hmm.